Add up with the line and then you're right on it.
That's pretty good.
That's very exciting.
It's more than one page.
Oh, we have to do all the signatures.
What's that? Yeah, Mark's not here, but we can use the stamp.
Oh, okay.
Page five. Oh, no, no, no. That was.
I like it.
Oh, yeah, we don't want that.
Is this the joke camera?
Just joking, just joking, yeah, but it's on camera. So, page five.
There's a whole bunch.
It's a whole bunch.
Oh, he's focusing on you.
Yep, well, he's the only one doing it. We're, there's no excitement. We're the, uh, corn staplers.
Yep.
Don't. It's just a few pages. It's only three.
Uh, no, it's every page.
Hurt pardon?
Isn't it every page?
No. No. Page, uh, one, page five, page six. And that's it. One, one, five, and six are the only ones that I see that are asking for our signatures. Oh, no, sorry. Oh, sorry. There's more.
There's more. Yeah, there.
There's more, sorry.
I was looking on the outside.
I was looking up there.
Yeah. Yeah, we want, we should probably ask for that.
But they be on the outside, yeah, so it's easier.
In a consistent place.
Else we miss something.
Let's slide down here, sir. You can start stamping.
All right, I'm ready.
Well, I mean. How many? Twelve sheets?
Get my stamp on. You know, good.
Yeah, we discussed whether that was appropriated on it.
Good stamp, oh yeah.
Well, it's a over, uh.
As all.
You already have your checkbook, so.
No, I don't actually have a checkbook anymore. Bill pay. I have a password.
Yeah, right?
What's the password?
Yeah.
Sophie has it. Your wife will tell you what you need.
I can, I can ask her to rent a check.
Oh, now we're up here.
Can we get one of these with everybody's signature on it?
Right, all lined up perfectly. We line it up one time and then it's like.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry.
But you have to do it. You have to do it, right? You have to do it.
Okay, I'll take a picture of that.
Just ran out of table. We have a table. We got one more.
Before I actually do sign this, what is this?
Quite.
See these letters here?
Yeah.
What do you mean? You want to know? Oh, wait, down here. I hope I'm not missing.
This is for the.
Yeah, so far.
Yeah, okay, got it. Yeah, you're right. It's the up and down. It's like, wait, wait, wait.
Two businesses. The.
Two businesses.
No, they, they did that a lot.
Near them tomorrow.
Yeah, one is the.
One is the condo, business condo, and the other one is not being built.
And this is approved previously, everything?
Yep, we've already approved it. We just.
Yep.
He had to make the changes that we approved.
Yeah, so.
Why? I just, I wanna make a line on this so I know where it starts.
It's the opening.
What?
So you can see it. It's got kind of a little, I mean. It's a little hard to see, no doubt, but.
Don't stamp it upside down, Raj.
That would be a.
With yours, you couldn't tell, Raj.
That's true. For as you can, because it's have a.
So we're conflicted.
Yeah, right, right.
Yep. Did I miss one?
No, I don't think so.
Get the stamp going, I'm gonna start. What's wrong?
Where's Melanie?
It's snowy, so she's not here.
Gotcha.
Where's this, where's this snowy?
It's gonna start at seven o'clock.
It's like, gee.
Where's she looking? Longest time.
Leo Minister.
Leo Minister?
Yep.
There we go.
Raj, where are you signing?
I'm for.
Got it.
Just put it somewhere, guess.
Somewhere near it, at least.
It's a crime.
And don't forget, there's one under here. There's one that's under here.
I think, you know, Mark will be the stuff now.
Oh, he's gonna love this one.
There we go, all right.
How do we, how do we align the, align the lower one?
Now, today I wore a sweater on purpose with the turtleneck, because it's so cold over here and I feel.
So it comes out right in?
Turn, turn down.
That's right.
Seventy.
Right.
Well, I think, you know, so I was so chilly, I was like, I'm getting smart. I'm gonna wear a sweater. I got, I got, I got this this time.
I guess you gotta layer even inside here.
I think, you know.
There you go, that's.
Mine aligns, mine aligns up.
It just takes a little practice.
Oh, right, because yours is different.
Yeah, mine goes up.
Oh, this is different, all right.
Oh, and don't miss this. There's a, one underneath here.
Raj, where are you signing?
Yeah, because, you know.
Well, yours came off perfectly when you listened to me.
No, when I listened to you, that came up wrong.
No, funny.
Trust me, Raj, trust me.
It's not a religion, but trust it.
It's not a religion?
It's pretty good.
I didn't sign in today.
Oh, wait, I missed that one underneath there.
There is a one bundle.
Is that the one you've been telling?
There's an under, under.
Is there a date on it?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I saw.
There we go. Wait, so are there more? Hold on a second.
I think there is one more bundle there.
Is there a whole another?
There's one more set, but we're just gonna keep the set. When we give them the signed ones, we'll keep the set.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to worry about this one right here.
Right.
Got it. Awesome.
I'll just draw him someplace.
Right, yeah, but.
I know. Do you want, you kinda wanna line it up, right?
Well, Raj is like, under, over, under, around.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's.
Why did yours have to be different, Raj? Is it because it?
Everything is.
The way I signed.
He has a huge signature.
Yeah, I was gonna say, your name is long.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So your name is long, so they had to give you something different?
What the hell is? Four, two, three, we're missing who?
Me.
Yeah.
Nancy up there. I've been, I've been shooting a wall.
It's okay, see, you get.
Oh, wait.
So now, so, so this is the copy. This is the copy that we are keeping that we're not sign, putting all the signatures on.
Right.
That's why you have to come in early, Mark.
So you don't have to put a signature on it?
Come in late, that's a punishment.
Mark, what's your name?
If you come in late, that's a punishment.
Signing after Raj? I signed that one. This one.
Where are you signing here? Oh, you're down the bottom.
Clearly, it says Mark Frieden.
Yeah, all right, all right, yeah.
Sorry.
It's all right.
Actually, it's not terribly clearly.
Clearish.
That's the, that's the smear.
There's an N.
There's an M. That's about all there is.
I'm sorry, that's about what my last name looks like. There is a discernible L in it also, but.
Well, there's a bump where the F should be.
The only, the only legal sign that's segmented is mine.
Another, right, yeah, there.
That's true.
Sign this one and see.
Paul's is pretty good.
Sorry. Sorry, it trails off at the end.
Yeah, for the N.
Yeah.
You get the Anders.
Yeah.
Benny's.
Okay.
Very big now.
Are you gonna put these together now?
I'll take care of it. Move on to the next one.
All right, so, old business, holy cross, contemplative center update. They're coming in.
He said you will take up the.
Which one?
Well, we're gonna go in order. We're going in order. They're coming in on the twenty-seventh of March.
Great.
Okay. So we're done. Check. Uh, and Melanie's already on the agenda. Uh, Century Drive Extension, we have that to sign. I'll pass that around while Benny completes his task there. Oh, Mark. You'll wanna take the note here from Melanie. It's a duplicate of, of this document.
Oh, can I take it home? Deliver it to myself?
See the note from Melanie?
Mr. Property, in case you.
Mark?
Mark a mistake?
Yeah, Mark's mark, Mark makes a mistake.
In case Mark makes a mistake.
Writing this letter?
Oh, signing.
Okay. The next thing is. So this is for Worcester Corporate Center, the three-year extension of the definitive plan?
Yep, they all let it sound.
And we already, do we already, do we, we all voted for that, so we can mark it ourselves?
Yep.
Yes or no?
Should we all mark one letter, or?
I'm putting, I'm putting one letter down there. And I will.
Pass it along.
This is their fourth last extension.
Fifth or sixth last extension.
So.
They sell that property, then you don't have to worry about it.
So.
Right, right, right.
I guess we'll sign both of them.
We put on, I have to make mistakes.
Okay.
We have to wait for Mark to make a mistake.
I'm signing third because I've been doing that so far.
Moving on.
You wanna crack her?
Yeah.
It's in line as well. Sorry.
That's catered.
We'll go under.
Yeah.
Go under a little bit, see how that is.
He's never been using a stamp.
I don't want to piss off him, Mark.
There we go. Went a little under and that worked. That worked out a little bit better this time.
We get.
And you're a yes, right?
Oh, yeah.
Need some maintenance.
Once we get the hang of these stamps, it'll go much faster, right? These will, then this, there will be an efficiency gained here.
Returns to you.
Yeah, on camera.
Oh, see, I was gonna, yeah, I get. I get it. I've signed, I've been signing in the third line, this whole block, but I didn't look on the other side, that there was a thing.
Works.
You're a notary, that's awful.
Yeah.
I'm an attorney too.
What's this?
This is just a duplicate in case, this, this is an extra copy in case.
Well, see, I made a mistake, actually, because I didn't see that there was any other thing on there. I didn't see the left side of the page there.
Should we get stamped for yeses and nos?
No.
But why?
Oh, we got it. Not a problem. Next. Oh, yours is on.
Yes, yes.
Bump up there.
What's going on?
Somebody made a mistake.
We'll give her both of these and she can take the best one. Is there a problem?
It's all good.
Make a pile.
Yep. All right, uh, Finders Pub. No as-built. Next topic. Next topic.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Finders Pub, no as-built certification received. Send letter to finalize site plan review.
That was kind of a question, I think. The idea was, we met with the folks from Finders, Ari, who's gonna open up a place. She got a, the, I think they got a permit from the selectmen for.
No, but based on, they do, I think, you know, Nancy did mention.
They got their.
Unless, you know, they are, unless they go through the planning board, so it's not going to give the handover of the certificate.
Okay.
Or, you know, maybe the chats would send a letter.
Yeah, well, right now, we haven't gotten anything from them. We haven't heard anything back at all, so if we could send an email or a.
Oh, send letter to finalize site plan review.
Yeah, because we, we heard from you, you attended the meeting.
Yeah.
We hope that you're, are you having issues, or is there anything we need to do? We're, we're awaiting submission of your as-built and your certification.
That's two things?
Well, it's the as-built and certification, which is on their approval.
Well, it is. It's fine. Should we just send the approval? I'm just kidding.
Well, yeah.
Can you, also, you know, can you send in a note to Nancy too?
Yeah, CC, the town administrator.
Did they, did she, did they apply for a liquor license?
Yeah, we did approve it. Not the, did we approve liquor license, but the store? I don't think so. They came in for liquor license, but.
So we look, we look at the as-built.
We're still, we, we met with him on whatever it was, December something, and it's been a few months, we haven't heard anything back.
Store license, yeah.
Yeah, so we want the as-built certification.
As-built and certification, yes.
This is going quick.
Okay.
Reports from other boards.
That's that, then. All right, so. We need to talk about the process review for a different parking and uses for marijuana establishments. Now, did we get anything from VHB on that?
Yep. Yes. It didn't give us parking, though, as far, I, I read wrong, I think it just was a general listing. Did you, did you notice, Raj, whether it had any stipulations about parking? I remember we got it, but then. And, uh, we got something, but it, it didn't really provide us. Yeah, it was just, it was the bylaw. It wasn't the regulations. Right, so I think a lot of towns are in the same boat we are.
We never give anything.
We have bylaws.
We never give anything?
He did.
Yeah, he sent us stuff from Maynard, I think.
He sent us a couple of bylaws. Maynard.
Oh, oh, oh.
Stuff from Maynard. I didn't get to look at it, but I saw, I saw it and I opened, opened it.
Yeah, that's almost, I got a little farther.
Right, right.
I just whisked through it and I didn't see anything about parking standards or anything. It was just like our bylaw.
Here's their bylaw, yeah.
So. Are there other things besides parking and traffic that might be different for a marijuana establishment?
I, I feel like this is the initial stages of these businesses coming about, right? You know, like, that's why, that's why it makes such a taxing problem with the parking and the traffic.
Well, it's the unknown, yeah.
Right, you know, and once they're, once they're everywhere and it's not, I mean, it'll be like opening a new liquor store, right?
Yep.
Um.
But we don't know how many, how much parking to allow, allow for, you know, or to require, rather.
It's almost like we need, so, so, I mean, like, if we have any kind of, I, you know, I don't know the rules well enough, but like, do we have? The current openings of things, it feels like special events, right? They're kind of like special, like long extended special events where there's gonna be heavy traffic and stuff, so do we have rules for that, that we could sort of apply in these instances? For now, until it sorta.
If something happens, yeah.
You know what I mean?
You can always apply the safety part of things. Like, if there's a lot of traffic, the police can always be involved because there's, it's a traffic problem and it's a safety problem.
Right.
Well, it's like.
Sure, like Gerardo's on Easter and stuff, right?
Christmas time.
Yeah.
But they might, they might contract it, but I mean, you know.
Yeah. But maybe that's something we.
I was thinking we should, I mean, if we're planning, we should try to have something that is in our bylaws, but I haven't seen anything around that has it all clear. When they come in, we initially had talked, um, about having it in the host agreement.
Yeah.
But I don't, I haven't seen them, but I assume it's not.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that I think that we, the way it starts out initially will not be applicable, like.
Right, long-term.
Long-term, right, right.
Yes, correct, correct. But in Lester, it was a terrible scene. They had to bus, bus people over.
Sure. Sure. Well, I guess it's, does it have to be in a bylaw? Right now, I guess what I'm, what I'm getting at is, like, I don't wanna make a, some kind of a, put us in a policy place where then we have to apply it, or it's hard to.
Right.
Change it later when it no longer applies.
So my question is, take Cumberland Farms, for example, a convenience store, there's traffic going in and out of there all the time. How many parking spaces are required for that store and as by square foot?
Yes.
You know, wouldn't the same general thing be required for a retail marijuana store?
It could be. The trouble was is Cumberland Farms came in because they know their stores and they knew their requirements.
Yep.
So they proposed more parking spaces than what we require. If, I mean, let's say you get someone who's in, it seems like the folks who are proposing marijuana wanna do the right thing and make it work. So that even if we require twenty spaces, they will provide, and that's what, what's his name, uh? Fuller came in and said he was gonna do fifty or a hundred, whatever it was.
Right, right. Have that whole extra space that they weren't gonna develop right away.
Yeah, some, right, to reassure us that.
It'll be fine for the.
More than the minimum and they understand the parking situation. Yes, and you're, yes.
But there are some people that come in that say, I'm doing exactly what the bylaw says, like Gerardo's. Gerardo's put in just the minimum number of parking spaces allowed. And then changed the use, so there was more spaces really required, so now we always have traffic issues there.
Well, there's not traffic necessarily because of the lack of parking. There's traffic just because of the volume of people who are turning left and running it out.
Right.
Their only approved parking is what's in, on the south side of the building. There's no approved parking on the north side. There's no approved parking on the P, um, Steve's Pizza access. They only had what was on their lot.
Right.
All that other is on other properties.
Do they conform to the requirements for a, uh? I know in a drive-through, you're supposed to have so many waiting car spots.
Queuing, yep.
Queuing, is, do we have that in our bylaw, or do we go by?
We do. We have.
Do they conform to that?
Does who?
Uh, Dairy Queen?
No. Dairy Queen, no, they got a variance on that.
Because I remember when Cumberland Farms came in, you were talking about that, there was the queuing issue at the one behind Honey Farms. There wasn't enough space. Like, they were supposed to have a car.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
In the bay and a queue, and that queue was gonna be in the, whatever, the.
Travelway, right.
Yeah, travelway. So it wouldn't fit.
Yeah, so we didn't allow that.
Right.
Yes, yeah.
We asked them for more space and they, by, I think we actually asked them to reduce the number of pumps so that they could have more queuing space, and they thought that was ridiculous. You know what I mean?
Luckily, they moved to where they are now.
Yeah, now it's got plenty of room.
Yeah, um, except on Saturday mornings. The parking lot is full at Cumberland Farms, usually on Saturday mornings.
Is it?
Yeah.
Well, they actually have parking in the back.
They do have parking in the back.
But, but no one likes that, right.
I say.
Yeah.
So if you recall, during the bylaw committee, subcommittee.
Yep.
On this, you know. Uh, the parking came up. There is no parking regulation in the state Cannabis Control Commission. To take a, you know, take it from that. So what we said that time, if I remember correctly, you know, or maybe correct me wrong. So we'll leave it up to the local police chief.
And like, he would know better than.
Which is nice, but it's hard to sta, it's hard to establish.
But how are you going to come up with a number, you know?
I don't know. Usually, I'm just hoping that the person comes in, will wanna do the right thing and have enough parking spaces for their clients.
Okay, but, but, you know, like Sarah said, so now we need more parkings. We need more things. If you put it as a regulation, then every business opens up or something. But, you know, again, you know, the other, other thing is, you know, we have only two stores. So the two stores are going to be, the, you know, it's a open thing. Uh, the com, uh, host agreement was signed. Approved, I would say.
One or two. How many have been signed?
For two. For two.
Two?
Two stores. Yeah, two has been signed.
Who?
Or approved.
Who?
It's by the Board of Selectmen.
Which two?
Uh, one is for the, for the, the Fuller site.
That's, that's.
The parking lot.
Other one is the El Forno.
Oh, yeah, okay, good.
All right, Ganech.
Which two was signed or were approved?
So that one is at the El Forno.
That's been approved by the, by the.
It's not approved. The host agreement was, is issued.
Next step.
Was, it came before the Board of Selectmen.
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen said, yes, we are approving the host agreement. But it's not been.
Just the host agreement. That's, that's one step.
Just the host agreement.
The host agreement for the El Forno site.
And, uh.
Has approved. Still has to get to you fellas, though.
Yes, that's.
In the state, too. The state has.
Yeah, in the state.
The state's.
I just wanna add a piece of information, but you might be aware of it. I went to the meet and greet, uh, with the, with, with Ganech. And they have a woman who was experienced worldwide in bringing marijuana facilities onboard. She was, she was very, uh, very communicative and very good. But she did say that they were making a recommendation for one hundred and twenty spaces to go on that lot, above, slightly above that.
Right.
Hundred and twenty spaces.
Right, wow.
And just doing a little bit of calculation, a hundred and twenty cars, if that's filled, you have a minimum of a hundred and twenty people in that store at a given time.
Yeah, so that makes no sense.
Couldn't get them in there. It's impossible.
It's, that, a hundred and twenty, I think, is way, uh, shooting way over what they would ever need.
Exactly. She said to me later, the next day, when I talked to her personally on the phone, she said, we always do that. She said, we'd be happy with about forty.
Yeah.
Okay, so forty.
Well, now, yeah, depending on how much square footers they have in the store and how many people can possibly.
Exactly, the number of customers you can process and so, that, that, that doesn't bother me at all. Just concerned with the entry and exit of those vehicles.
As, as am I, as am I.
Yeah, that's a term.
And, and I would suggest that there not be a separate entrance for that lot, the new lot that's proposed there, that it, that you handle it all through the, the existing plaza parking lot and make an entrance.
Well, we have to see what.
So we have to see what.
It, it may be that it's a different elevation, so.
It's a very different.
It's a different ownership.
But I.
The, the place where the existing entrances to that lot, it's very bad sight lines.
Sure.
Uh, for south going south. You'll come up, you'll come up past Walmart and all of a sudden you'll be, you'll be right there.
There you are, bang, right on top of it.
So that's, that's a problem.
I agree.
But see, my, my concern, that's one, but the main concern that we have, as a butters in the back, we look right up into that lot where they cleared it to put trailers and everything.
Yes, yep.
Okay, we, my, my unit has a straight view, my front window, right to that spot.
And so you lost all those, and you lost all those trees, didn't you?
That's right, and the other building across from us, the rear of that building is even closer, so the, the concern with us as a butters is the lighting.
Right.
Okay, low lighting with the lights directional that way, we don't have a problem.
That would be my concern also.
And that's it.
The lighting provided on the. Yeah, but the lighting that lights the parking lot will be required not to spill onto your area, but the headlights.
That's, that's okay.
Oh.
You know, that's, that, I don't. That's, that's okay, because, you know, that, that's, that, I don't know.
You can certainly.
Unless you put on a fence across, you know.
Well, that's what these people, right over here had a concern for that, and that's why that fence is there.
Okay.
Cause the elevation is high.
Yes.
So the lights were gonna shine into like their second story.
So there could be a fence there, there could be, um, shrubbery, bushes, trees put there.
It may be both, I'm not sure what the zone is.
No, that's our issue.
A residential zone, which they might, they may need a thirty foot.
Those are thirty?
Yeah, that, that would be our concern also, is the lighting and the, the buffer between over that residential area and, uh, and parking lot.
Maybe we'll deal with this when the site plan.
Yeah, when they submit something, we'll have to review it, I mean, the big issues we usually have are traffic, lighting, noise, and.
Dumpsters.
Yeah, that's the noise, in the mo- early morning when they dump the dumpster.
There's one other issue, when that was, when that was a McDonald's.
Yep.
Uh, the neighboring people from Maple Street and all that, the young people.
Oh.
They knew, they, they knew, they could come up our driveway, come across them, or in the back of our units. And then walk through the little cutaway, there's a little.
Oh boy.
They could walk right into the back of the restaurant, that is still there. So the other issue is how, when, when, it's gonna be, that was hamburgers, now we're talking marijuana. So you're gonna have an awful lot of interest coming from, from, uh.
Anywhere.
The teenagers or the old, the younger mothers from over there, and instead of fighting the traffic, they'll walk up our driveway, come across our parking lot, and then walk across and go in the back way.
Talking people parking on those streets and walking over, or just walking from the neighborhood?
We don't, well, in the old days, they would just be walking because there wasn't much of an attraction to get a hamburger, but this is a whole different story. So.
And we can. So maybe they don't need.
That's one thing we can, we can actually have them put a fence up.
Parking lot, they're not parking lot.
Yeah, cause a fence would work for both the lighting as well as having a barrier, so they walk once, walk up to that fence and then they can't get in, they have to go walk around. A different area, not make it easy for them to get through there.
That's right, yeah.
So you wanna limit the access from that area.
That's the main thing, I'm not fighting the presence of the marijuana and not fighting any of that nonsense. Because quite frankly, we're, that back land that we have there, that's owned by the Marino Trust. They're up in, uh, you know, they own that whole, that whole arrangement, that, that lot. That was built by Rose Marino and her sons, Rose is down, if she's still alive, she's in Miami, but the son is up in, uh.
Wakefield or something?
Huh?
Wakefield or something?
Wakefield, they, they're the ones that own that property.
Oh.
Michael is the son, he's a lawyer, so he's the one, and he has that land back there that's been cleared since nineteen eighty, when those units were put up. One fella in town, Roddy, I think he dug the foundations, he said when he came in, that land was already cleared. No one knows how it got cleared, be that as it may, we've been maintaining it. Our, our landscaper's been cutting it and all that since nineteen eighty-four, the same stuff.
Eighty-four, you should try.
So alright, so, so now you get that much possession and so forth, so we're talking with Marino about that, but we don't wanna.
Eighty-four. There you go.
We wanna get our friendly, give us a, a no use easement and we'll be happy, we don't wanna ruin his deal going into the marijuana, all that, you know.
Yep.
But the lighting, there we wanna be a little bit of a, a run to get that, so we're not looking at that.
How many units have that, you have placed?
There's, there's twenty-one units, three buildings of seven each. And the, one goes sideways, so they don't see it, but my unit, the one across, the back of it is looking right at it and the front of my window is looking right at it. So, uh, we want to.
If that comes, uh, to fruition and we have a site plan review, then that's why.
Yeah, that's the time it is.
You and your neighbors should come in and, uh, and talk to us.
That will be, that will be a few weeks down the road, I would.
You should get a letter, you should get a letter.
Get a, as a bonus.
We have, nothing, nothing has been presented, uh, to the planning board, there's been no applications yet for that, so we don't know when that would happen.
Okay, good, well, good to go then.
But there's at least a month before, in between when we get an application and when we can have a public hearing and that.
But I think the traffic, uh, not for my concern, but with that four-way stop right up the end here at this one, I seen three accidents up there already.
That's the worst intersection in town.
It's terrible.
Yeah, Franklin and.
Yeah, it's not a four-way stop, it's a two-way stop.
Well, it's not a four-way.
It's not a four-way.
Oh, trying to be a four-way stop.
Right, that, if you, you can't put a stoplight, you have to get the state approval, right?
We need to do something with the state.
Well, that, that'll be a.
That's hard there too, cause there's a stoplight right there, right after.
Five years up, at least five years up the road, yeah.
Right, and then you've got this other one now here, so that's a, that's a can of worms for you folks to settle.
Yes.
Another what?
How are you gonna get the traffic in and out of that place? Have to need budget. You, you'll manage that or whatever, whatever you do, I have no objection to that.
We'll see.
You could, you could require that they have a, that they have an office or they have a police officer.
Well, we, we don't wanna.
Not all the time though.
We wanna try to make it work in a way that doesn't require hiring someone during a busy time.
Right.
Cause there are busy times that come up when they don't know to expect it, so we wanna make it just designed so that it works.
There's one town near the Cape that they have, they made the people that own, that opened up the, the, uh, the store, they made them bus people. They have a parking lot a mile away from where the store is. And they bus, they have a bus going from this, that parking lot to the store and back.
There's some, there's some places that are in tight areas, a downtown area, for example, with storefronts, there, there's no, there's no parking except for municipal parking or something a few blocks away, so that's, that's a tough one.
So the one that's gonna go, the one that would possibly go into where El Forno is, because that's considered a business center, right? They, with their, do you know if their hour, it would depend on what their hours are, so that they don't conflict with all the other stores, the post office.
Why?
They told us, they told us they're gonna be open seven days a week from ten in the morning till ten at night.
Sounds like.
I mean, that's not gonna happen. Yeah, that ten at night is not gonna happen, but.
Seven days a week.
Does the bylaws say eight?
Right.
I think it says.
There's a, there's hours in the bylaws, it's not.
Bylaw. Yeah, they can say anything.
I think it was, I think it was ten to eight, but I'm not sure.
Right, we don't, but we don't need to even get into all the details, cause they're gonna present.
Can we, can we stay with the parking, please?
What parking?
Parking.
Done.
Yeah, so.
Done? Oh, okay.
We don't really have any information or any guidance on it.
Well, if there's nothing on the state and there's no other towns that have it, then we do the best we can.
So we use the seat of our pants and give a best estimate. And maybe the applicant would have a better idea of, given a certain size store, how many people would they expect to have on a daily basis or a peak hour or something like that?
Yep, well, they're gonna have to present that.
Cause we don't have the information.
Right.
So, isn't that, the shared parking you were talking about, isn't that, that's a ZBA approval?
No, it's allowed, they just have to have an agreement, but it's not a shared parking when it's a business center. Business center should be designed for whatever parking is needed, if they're adding a use that wasn't allowed in the business center, then they have to adjust their parking accordingly.
Yeah, but I thought that that was the, that approval was a ZBA approval. If there's a restaurant and a bank and they share, like the bank has the get parking during the day, and the restaurant would have it at night, so they don't need twice as much parking, I thought the ZBA was the one to prove that.
Because when, when Flag was gonna take over that, wanted to take over that property, they had, they petitioned the ZBA for a, uh, a special permit to put their trailers open in that.
No, they needed a special permit, I thought, because it was one of the vehicle uses things, they.
No, it, it's a change of use.
That would be, that's different than what we're talking about here, though, this, this would be the shared parking between two different businesses and the same parking lot, common parking.
Yeah, I think we can allow that under the site plan review.
We can?
Yeah.
Uh, well, I think it's ZBA because of change of use.
But they still, they still have to come to us for a special permit under the mari- marijuana bylaw.
Yeah, no, they'll come, the, the, but I think that, I thought it was a ZBA because afterwards, when it's a business center, if the businesses changed use, it didn't have to come back to us, they could do it.
Okay, so the parking, you know, in this bylaw it says parking, yeah, sorry, last, parking shall be in accordance with the.
Is this ours or is this the one?
Our bylaw.
Okay.
Parkings shall be in accordance with the West Boydsons zoning bylaw, section three point six.
Well, that was kinda, cause I think you do.
Section three point six?
There we go, I guess.
Section three point six.
The parking is not section three point six.
We don't have to talk about this.
Well, it doesn't address it, perfect.
Zoning by law.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, the parking go by yours?
Parking is five point two.
And that, that one says three point six, you said?
Section three point six.
Location, dimensions, hospitals, places of employment, drive-up services, professional offices, bowling.
It says three point six.
Location and dimensions on page five.
Page five three, section three point six E on the site, and then they go down to number four, which says, shared parking.
And then what does it say?
The zoning board of appeals may allow a reduction of the required number of spaces in con- in conformance with section five point two point B point three of this bylaw, it's on page forty-three. Do you have the same one that I do?
I wrote my own bylaws, so.
You're good.
See, your page numbers are different.
So, our, so the parking bylaw is different, but we can make it work when it comes in.
Okay. So, the other question you have asked me is ours, unless and otherwise specified in the section, in the condition of the special permit. Marijuana retail shall be open to the public no earlier than eight AM or later than eight PM, eight to eight.
Eight to eight.
It's not ten o'clock.
They don't have to be open from eight to eight, but they can't be open earlier or later than eight.
One other thing.
Yeah.
There's also, uh, an application for a medical marijuana on the one side of the post office to go in that spot.
Oh, is there?
No.
Medical now?
They don't have one.
There was a, I think there was another.
Another company, not, not Ganes, somebody else.
No? No other applications is there.
Well, there was, um.
He withdrew.
They withdrew?
Away.
Okay.
It was in the paper.
No, that was also not medical, that was also for a retail.
For a recreational?
For recreational. Same thing. There.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we'll deal with it when it comes up.
So we look, just wait for our butters notice.
You wait for the butters notice and come on in and we'll.
Good enough.
Or you could get ahead of it and you could sit, make parking spaces in your place and charge for parking.
Oh, that's right, like the ten dollars, but, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sure, something like that here, you can, you can park here, but it just costs you ten bucks and then you walk through this little path.
If you needed.
That was a, that was an informal, uh humorous suggestion.
So, so basically on the parking, because there's, there's no state mandate or anything, then each town can make up their own policy.
Well, if you figure in every, every location's gonna be different.
But exactly, so what I'm saying, if, if the state doesn't have a law, a bylaw that's, you know, mandates this, then basically they're leading it up to each municipality to do as, as they see fit. So that means that because they have to come to the planning board, you guys can decide, and young lady, you guys, you can, you, you can decide on how many parking spots.
Right.
And where, and if they need to be bused or whatever.
Yep. Okay. Thank you. Um, what's this item, CMRPC annual assessment?
Did you sign in with your name and everything, so we can put it in the minutes?
Yep, yep, I got it. He signed it.
We just need your name as our present, to put it in.
Central Mass.
Thank you.
They're billing us for this, and what's, we just usually go by, one year, a couple of years ago, they charged us for the inmates, so we usually check just to make sure it's the population, yes, yes, yep, they.
The accessible population, which doesn't include.
Doesn't includes incarcerated.
Incarcerated.
Incarcerated, yeah.
I'll check.
So that's the amount we need to.
So we need to do what this?
We just need to review it and pay it.
Is there a bill here?
I don't know if there's a bill, but this is the amount.
Do we still wanna be in CMRPC?
Nah. What?
Do we still wanna be in it, that's, I assume so, but.
Yes, I, I would suggest so.
Alright.
Um.
So we just let her know that it looks okay and.
Yep.
When we get the bill, pay the bill.
Thank you for coming in.
That's it.
Yeah, great.
Okay. So, we should maybe give that back to her.
So this money, town face this money to CMRPC?
Yes.
Now this is something, you can review the. This.
We're less than, we're more than Berlin.
Something correspondence?
That's right, yeah, that's, it's interesting to see.
Under the.
East Brookfield, six hundred bucks.
Correspondence.
I thought I have it on the agenda, but obviously she didn't, didn't.
You've.
Reports from other boards.
Next meeting?
Reports from other boards.
Next, next meeting?
No, 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 after that.
Next item?
Under, uh.
Other business.
Invoices, communication, where's the communication? Oh, correspond, review of correspondence, oh, so we can do that now?
We can.
So in the correspondence, we got a submittal from Doug Andrysek, who represents Flag RV, he submitted some drainage calfs and some revisions to the site plan review to show drainage that now meets the, um, stormwater standard. So they came in with a site design.
Okay.
We approved it, signed the plan, but it didn't fully meet the stormwater standard, so they've now revised the plan to.
We signed the plan?
Yep.
They did.
Yes, we already signed that plan.
Wasn't that the one that they had already done?
Yeah.
All the work on it anyway?
Yeah, it was done.
Right, so it wasn't like it.
Right, but.
More like a.
But now they fixed something that, that needed fixing, so that's a good thing.
Well, we asked the question that they were supposed to have done things to meet the DEP stormwater standard and they submitted documentation now that they have.
Now that they're approved for it.
But they have to now add in some stormwater infiltration practices.
That's something we would look at tonight and sign?
Um, no, we just need to accept it and, uh, I can, you can authorize me to send an email back to Doug and say we reviewed it and. Let us know when you start construction, we can monitor the construction of it.
Okay, have you seen, have you seen this document?
Instruction of what?
You read it?
Yeah, look when it was received.
January thirty-first, yeah, okay, so you read it?
Yes, I've looked at it.
Barely in time. So what do you mean, start construction?
Right here, so they're gonna have to put in some proposed stormwater infiltration system, so.
Oh, I think in practices, like cleanup, uh, practice.
No, no, it's a, there's an existing catch basin that's gonna now discharge to an infiltration system.
Which doesn't exist.
It goes into the ground, it doesn't, isn't there now, but they're gonna construct it, so when they start doing the construction, we get notified, we send VHB out to look at it.
Is that like a oil water separator kinda thing, is that what?
Nope, this is a, it's like a septic system with trenches, the water goes in.
Oh, they still gotta put that in?
Through the ground.
I thought they had done that.
Not a septic, no, this is, it's for the stormwater, they have not.
What, they, what did they put, like French drains or something, that's it?
I don't know what they did, but this is what they're proposing to do.
Didn't do enough, is apparently the thing.
I'm surprised, uh, this is, I'm surprised that it came to this, I would've expected us to have to ask them to do this, not their own engineer.
No, we did.
No, we asked them to do the, the calculation.
Right, because the calculation, when, they came in, when they said that they could do it and it met, he came back and said, well, it doesn't quite meet it, we need to do a little something more. So, we approved a plan based on his saying it was okay, now they're willing to go and do the work.
That's, that's good, I'm, I'm glad, I'm, I'm impressed with the whole way this is going.
Okay.
I think there's a detail if you want it.
Yep.
I've never seen red.
Those are drainage areas, so hot, moist flow into it.
I know, just never seen it colored, it's all colored in.
Yep.
What's the copyrighted red of the, of the drain?
Oh, that's true, I, I did the red X on the, uh, emoji, maybe they saw that.
So this is what we're looking at, this thing here. So it goes into a catch basin and then through a pipe into this infiltration trench.
Oh. Like behind, uh, not Fuller, who was the other guy built back there?
Yes.
On Harwell?
Yep, yep.
Well, next to the.
Where the UPS trains?
UPS, yeah, yeah.
Yes. Diverty, Rob Diverty.
Yeah, so is, is it a shallow?
Same thing.
But it's a shallow water table too, cause they had trouble there?
Um, I think so, yes, yep, yep, they said they went out and did perk test, or deep holes.
Okay.
In this area to figure out whether it was done, see.
And have enough room to put that in and we're good to go?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, everybody want a closer look?
Something better, that's it.
Is that for Flag?
Yes, Flag RV, yep.
Once they get that done, then they'll be square away.
Yeah, I think that was it, and then there was a impervious, yeah, something about, they have to take out some impervious area, like.
They do?
Seven hundred square feet of stuff.
Why?
Cause they said they want to.
Oh, to make the calculation work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do they have to go to the conservation with that too?
I think the conservation already gave them an approval.
And this kind of improves the whole situation, so they wouldn't.
Yes.
Disapprove it.
Right, it shouldn't be a big deal, but it's, yeah, it's, it needs approval, it may be a change if the CONCOM needs to review.
Is that, did they say that's gonna be underneath an impervious area or pervious?
It's not pervious, it's under a pervious area.
So they're gonna be parking heavy, whatever, or whatever the caper's on top of it?
No, it's a pervious area.
Yeah, but that's like the gravel, that's after parking lot is in it.
No, 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 it's not, it's not under the traveled way, it's off to the back.
Oh, it's back far enough that they're not parking on it?
It's, it kinda shows a line where.
Is it in the back of the building, that new building?
It is the back left, if you're looking at the building.
This is the new, this is the new building, right?
And where's the?
This is the edge of pavement, this dash line, edge of pavement, and this is beyond the edge of pavement, it's a catch basin.
Oh, but near the corner of the building.
Just, just near the, yeah, near the corner of the building.
Okay. So the marijuana parkers aren't gonna be there?
Probably not.
Just Holy Cross people.[1642.74]
Just the Holy Cross parkers.
The ones that wanna run across the street, you never know.
Oh boy, you don't want.
Maybe that's what the marijuana, if there's an over.
It's like.
Parking, they could park them up in the, uh, Holy Cross place.
There we go, bust them down.
There's sixty spots up there.
They have buses, they have buses at the Holy Cross place, right?
That's all they do up there, we thought they were buzzing in, they're buzzing out.
Yeah, that's right.
Park at the Girl Scouts.
We, we misinterpreted that.
Can park at the Girl Scouts.
Yep, something went down there.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Reports from other boards.
Did you need dinner before?
What?
That, wasn't that your dinner?
That was dinner.
Yeah.
So, I've been advised.
Well, this wasn't on the agenda.
You missed the paper, it's in your folder.
It was supposed to be on the agenda, I was, I asked her to put it on so we could encourage people to attend, cause it's actually a very good workshop.
I think we should nominate a mark to attend this meeting.
When is it?
It's on a Saturday.
Saturday, um, there's a bunch of workshops put on by, uh.
CPTC.
CPTC at Holy Cross on.
March sixteen.
Starting at.
Eight AM, eight to the thirty.
He's got it all.
I go every year.
I know, and it's, they've got some really good, they actually have new ones.
One thing that I was gonna tell you, is one of their sessions is writing villagers' center bylaws.
Yes.
It's a workshop that's gonna walk you through the process, the benefits, and show you successful efforts. And the two, the two speakers are Judy Barrett and Mara Toohill, who's the town planner for the town of Littleton, and she's also a member, board member of the CPTC, so.
Yep.
Now, can I just ask a question? Where, where do we stand now? I mean, I know that we.
We're talking about this first.
Huh?
Let's work on this.
Well, that's probably. Aren't you talking about that?
We're talking about the sessions, the training sessions. So what's, what's the question?
Well, I wanted to know what's going on with our village center bylaw, or.
Alright, we'll get, that's.
Intermission.
Well, we'll get that one. So does anyone have any idea, or you think you might be interested in going? You got, I think everyone got an idea.
I'm interested in going.
I'd love to go, but this is the day that we celebrate our ten year old, his birthday's the twelfth, so.
He's gonna have to learn that, you know, he's not the center of the universe.
Saturday. Yeah, right? And his buddy. His buddy.
Do you need information, cause I'll go and I'll bring some information back.
Uh, I'm hoping someone will go, or.
I'll go.
Couple people will go and learn some stuff.
Learn something good.
Wait, what time does it start? I might not be able to get it.
They serve a great, they serve a great lunch.
Yep.
At eight o'clock?
Yeah, and they serve breakfast too, partner for breakfast.
Oh, well, breakfast is probably eight o'clock, yeah.
But it is a very good set, uh, workshop. Or conference.
It's eight to nine?
What work is?
It's.
It's seventy-five bucks.
Right.
That's, yeah, that's a cheap.
And you can get reimbursed for it.
Okay.
Okay.
Cheap cost.
Alright, so you're aware of it, now your question's on village zoning.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm trying to compile all the comments together into one document.
I never got you.
It's been overwhelming.
But didn't, didn't the two, did the two people leave?
The one. One did.
One left, the other one's waiting for me to pull something together, I think we have an honor agenda for next meeting.
Elizabeth Wood left.
I have, I have comments written down, I thought of it this morning, I said, oh, I never sent my comments to Vinnie.
Okay.
So I will send you those.
Sounds good.
Any type of.
Comments are welcome.
Type it on send it to.
I'll put on a floppy.
And just one other thing, just for your FYI, on my, on June fifth and sixth, um, Mass Housing Partnership has their annual, um, Housing Institute at Devon's for two days.
Yep, that's Mark's thing, Mark's all over that.
I, I teach.
I've gone the last couple of years, it, it's really interesting, they, they have some, they have some good speakers and they, they put out some good information.
Yeah, it should be good, I mean, especially if the governor's putting through his thirteen thousand units.
San, no, San V's, no.
Alright.
MHP, Susan, is she there? Alright, then I'll go. Actually, when is that one?
It's June, it's the day after the town election, June fifteenth, so Wednesday and a Thursday.
Oh, I can't go a week? I'm not going.
Alright.
Okay. Now we have reports from other boards. Anybody?
No reports?
No?
Hmm?
Vinnie, no?
We meet tomorrow night with the open space.
Okay.
And the vulnerability team is tomorrow night too.
Oh, Trish is coming?
What?
Trish, from CMRBC.
Trish?
Eli.
Trish is coming too.
Oh, Trish is also?
That's what I heard.
Oh, okay.
I've got no other, I've got no other boards to report.
She said it's, it's, it's. It's going to be the open space, you know, we have, we are having a fist, we are having an, uh, housings tomorrow, yeah.
I need to report.
Tomorrow?
So I said, you know, only one thing, you know, open space may be the one, Trish might be going, this is the vulnerability, something, right?
Yeah, that's at six thirty.
Yeah, that's the one.
Open space is at six.
Yeah.
Yep.
She's coming.
Alright, you got nothing? Other boards?
Yeah, no.
Nothing?
I have, uh, uh, Affordable Housing Trust has decided that the Orchard Knoll property is not really what we wanna develop. It seems like there's gonna be too much cost to construct it there with the wetlands and building a culvert or bridge or something like that to get there, so we're investigating other sites in town.
Is this because of the DCA?
DCA, we're telling the DCA that this is the case, and so if they say, well, don't worry about it, we'll pay for everything, then we'll reconsider.
Yeah, boy, don't.
Ah, okay.
So.
Dream on it.
Exactly, so we're looking at other places, one of the places is Tibunan Drive, so.
They're the very good neighbors, like.
Yeah, the prison.
Wow.
We figure we'll just, uh, put the seniors in the prison and.
Can you keep him under?
I, you know.
Now we across the street, wait till they go.
The borders can.
The corner.
Yeah, I know, that's right.
The what?
Minutes for.
Yep.
They have a cor, don't they have a corner field?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Buck the inside of the road?
Oh, they have something, they have a farm, a little farm.
Oh, a review on the.
So minutes, I motion to accept the minutes for the February thirteenth public hearing on Shoesbury and Hartwell Street.
Uh, discussion first?
Which one?
Public hearing.
I have, I have a.
I can do them all if you want, do you have comments on any?
I do.
Alright, which one?
Because.
You want the tablet, Melanie is not here?
No.
Um, hang on a second, there was a mistake on one of these.
Did it say you were gonna do something you don't wanna do?
Uh, no. Uh, it said that the const, it was the regular meeting minutes, it said that I said that the transportation committee met, but I said that it didn't meet. So this is on the meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes, on page two at the very bottom. Mister Anderson said the transportation committee met, that should, that should say not met.
Did not.
Well, whatever, it's the same.
Wow, yeah, it's the same, okay.
Alright.
Good catch there.
Do I hear a motion?
Well, we got a motion for the public hearing for Shoesbury and Hartwell Street, and I'll amend to that the nine unit condominium development on Trynav, so we approve those two as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Is that, is that putting them together, or is that approving?
Two of them.
The motion is those two.
I to putting them together, and I to approving.
Alright, good, thank you.
As amended.
As amended, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Of staying?
And a motion to accept the, or approve the minutes for February thirteenth would be.
As amended.
Change that the transportation committee did not meet on page two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you.
What about this continued public hearing?
We put those two together.
That got combined, yeah, he put two of them together.
The two public hearings went together.
Oh, okay.
Um, so, Vinnie.
Hold on, second, second.
You got Steve's email about, about this, right?
I've seen it, yes.
Yeah, you've copied.
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure how to proceed on this, he doesn't wanna come in, uh, he wants the planning board's ideas about this, about how we should address what he feels is, um, excessive inspection by VHB. Excessive hours.
Who was, was this?
This is Steve.
Steven, Melanie, yeah?
Yeah, yeah. Over one twenty-seven Hartwell Street.
No, the seniors.
Oh, we were just seniors.
Yeah.
No, one twenty-seven Hartwell, so, the situation was is that they were paving, and we have VHB monitor the paving, so VHB was out there the way they always are, watching the paving.
Eight hours, all day.
Full day, yep, and oftentimes.
Full day. And he thought that was excessive.
Yeah, and what happens is, if they have other projects, if the paving's going fine and it's, it's a big open area, he'll go and check another site and come back and check and make sure everything was okay. The paving was going on all day, so he needed to wait, so it was one of those things where he was waiting for the, the work to be done, so that he could check and make sure everything was done correctly. So, there was no sharing of the bill with other pro, other projects. And so, I, the way I look at it is that's what happens, if there's nothing else going on, you, it's VHB's time, it's, he's out there doing the work, it's not like he didn't do the work. He didn't, he wasn't there, he was there the whole time and.
And they were paving the whole back lot, is that what it was?
Yeah, it's, I guess, I'm not sure.
So.
So it's like an eight hundred dollar bill for him being there, or something like that?
Yeah, but I, I mean, it's one, I, I would just send it and say, yeah, we, we feel sorry, but that's the way we've been doing things and work consistently.
Can you ask Wayne to give some break?
I think they did.
Well, they already did that, and Steve acknowledged that, uh, and VHB also is proposing using a local person to do.
Someone who's closer, so they're not driving all the way to save more.
Right, is that guy local?
Oh, cause do we, do you pay for, like, when they leave, or when they?
There's a couple of different ones.
Do we pay for when they leave the bill, is it like movers, like, okay, got it?
Yes. Yeah.
It was, it's Larry, he lives in Holden, he did, he did the inspections on ninety-two, not Main Street.
Oh, in Holden? Oh, he doesn't. Oh, he doesn't come from Watertown.
No, he, he did the ones that not Main, on not Main Street.
He's, he's, as in the guy, Jack London, he does it. So he's mostly.
He's from Faraway.
Yeah.
Jack's from Faraway.
He's from far, farther away, I don't know where he's from.
So can we tell Steve anything?
I would just ask him to pay it and.
And.
We're.
And.
So, it's a regular bill like everybody else.
Can I say?
I understand.
Yeah, but eight hours is, you know, what they do, you know, just sitting there and, you know.
I mean, it must happen.
He's monitoring the construction.
Do they have to require to sit there?
What's that?
Do they have to require to sit there for eight hours?
Uh, he's not required to, but if he left for a half an hour and came back, or an hour in the middle, like if he were going to another site, that would be okay, cause he doesn't have to watch the machine every minute. But, it's not as though he had somewhere else to go. He was there, he could have driven wherever, back to another place, but that's not realistic, so.
Yeah, but that's too bad for them, you know, they didn't have any other thing.
I mean, that's, why should, why should, why should?
Right, what can, what can these guys do about that?
You know, why should?
They should pay for a six, just say six hours, right?
Right, so it's six hours, he took off two, um, out of the, out of the eight.
Still, I feel this is excessive.
Why would it be excessive? We.
Because, you know, paving, you know, paving is somebody else is doing.
Right.
He is not doing anything, just sitting there and, uh, watching the paving for six hours, for eight hours.
But, the issue, the issue with paving is, is that you're trying to get a certain thickness, all you have to do is crank down the machine once, and it thins it, they see you coming, you crank the machine back up, you gotta keep an eye on stuff. And that's one of the reasons.
Steve's point is, he's a reliable person, and so is everybody involved in the project, but, you know.
That's true, and I, I have no problem with the contractor or their consultant, it's more, this is what we do with everybody else, we do it consistently, we didn't do it, it came into effect when they were renovating the work at Walmart.
That's his point, that's his point.
Yeah. No.
And Walmart didn't do the thicknesses that were on their plan, and if you were around about ten or fifteen, twelve years ago, you drove down that main entrance and it was waves.
Yeah, but you did mention, so the guys can go there, the engineers can watch it, if they have other business, other projects, they can go and come back.
Yep, for short time, short periods, yeah.
Right.
How short period you are.
It depends on, if you're doing a, a stretch where it's an easy slope, which is.
This is a easy, this is an easy.
But when it's dead level.
It's a flat, it's again, everywhere is a.
Flat is not an easy slope on paving, cause you end up getting puddles. A slope of one, one percent of noise.
Maybe, no, I would, I would think, you know, maybe ask, ask Wayne, uh, to give some more.
We did, we asked them and he gave.
Gave two hours worth.
Twenty-five percent reduction.
Maybe a fifty percent reduction.
If you wanna call.
Where are you gonna go though?
Yeah, you know, that seems to be very, you know, someone who is not doing anything, sitting there, and also, it's charges like, you know, you see the per hour charge, that's outrageous charge, for someone sitting there for.
I think it's hardest, I mean, I get. So, everybody else who's got flat, a big area of flat paving, has somebody sitting there for the entire time?
Someone watches the. Yeah.
So, I mean, I guess, and that's all you say, is that that's the, it's, you know, the nature of this particular project, that, that's why it is that way, as opposed to.
It's more. It is more, right.
Right?
It is more critical when it's a road that we're, the towns are gonna take ownership of, that's when you could tell them, well, no, this is our, this is critical.
Yeah, we have to.
And we definitely do that.
I mean, and that's where, that's, I think is where the whole thing is based on, is that when it's our road, or going to be our road, that's when we have to make sure that it's.
Right.
You know, proper, and I think that this is just part of the same regulation.
Sure.
You know, and, and so that's why it was there, that's why they were doing it, is to make sure that it's done.
And we may be, if we wanna change that practice, we can do that moving forward.
Right, well, it's kind of a problem because they've already spent, the guy's been paid already, I mean, VHB has already.
Yeah.
Put it out there, you know, I mean.
Steve says that's really by request for more efficiency and use of time on the inspectional side of their oversight.
Well, do they have anything else going on that day? I mean, they could have used whoever it was to do a number of things while he's there, alright, the paving's going on over there, over here we got a trench, over there we got something else.
Yeah. Or ADA compliance, whatever it might be.
Right, or whatever else they wanna do.
I, I don't know. I mean, it's not VHB, this is what we have asked VHB to do, so they're doing what is requested.
I just think it's a slippery thing, where if, we can ask them to discount again, we could even say it's free, but then the next time there's a charge, are they gonna come back and say?
Right.
We want that one to be free.
I think we just have to get the explanation right, which is, sounds like, that this is what we would do with anybody who has that, this is, the, the nature of this paving. The, and anybody, everybody has been asked to pay this amount. I think it, it sounds hard, it, it's, it's that part when I hear like, oh, but, you know, if they, if they just had other things to do, they could have left for a period of time and not been, you know, paid a charge for that, that, that sounds bad, right? Because then it's, it's not, it's just.
I wish they had other things to do.
I wish they'd had other things to do, but they didn't have anything, so now I'm penalized, right, so I, and that sounds bad.
Penalize.
We can't put that, we can't put that in the explanation.
Right, but they're not penalized, it's, if you, if you can make it more efficient, which is what we try to do, we try to optimize time that's there, and if you can't do it, you can't do it.
But is that due to the nature of what was happening there, or is that due to the fact that just that day, they didn't have anything else for this guy to do?
You know, that's.
They could have.
That's, that's, I, I think that's the question, you know.
It's not even that Jack, is it Jack, or who was it?[1516.54]
Larry.
No, it's not even that Larry had to find something else, other VHB work, he, he could've done other work on this site for this same place.
Yeah, but, you know, they are doing it, they are doing a very big job, paving is a big job.
Yeah.
So they don't want to focus on other jobs, right?
Well, they, I mean, they can, then, 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 alright, we can do efficient things if you guys are gonna do one thing at a time.
Then, you know, that's. I think VHB should've thought about it, you know, hey, eight hours I'm going to sit there, can I do other things?
I'm sure he said, I'm sure he brought that up.
I think I can say that. No. I don't know.
If, if he saw something else going on, he would've wandered around and checked it out.
Yeah, anyway.
Alright, well, so we have no, no, nothing specific.
I don't think there's a real good explanation, except that he would've done other things, he would've tried to lessen the bill, but there wasn't anything else happening.
No, this is the one thing, you know, this is the one thing. This is the one thing, you know, every developer comes in, it was before the Board of Selectment. And they all said, you know, VSP is, VHB is charging excessive amount, so.
Yeah, but everybody else would've done, if we told somebody else to go watch the paving dry, then somebody else would've gone and charged.
Maybe we should take a look at this thing, you know, do we really need to do this eight hours sitting, somebody sitting there?
No, you don't.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
If it's a twenty foot long driveway, you don't need to do it for eight hours, cause they're not even there for eight hours. But when they're doing two football fields worth of.
So, but, you know, what I'm saying is, you know, what I'm saying is, this is, this is my thinking. So, they have an engineer, they have the paving guy come, come, uh, they have, they have their own engineers, they have their own paving guys, they all experienced guys. And I'm, I'm sure they will, you know, when the VHB comes in, when they inspect it, okay, this is right paving, right thing, and then, that's it, right? So the, the, their own engineers will take care of it, and they will do it, right?
So.
Or maybe a couple of hours.
So do we not inspect on some engineers' work?
No, I'm not saying it, not some engineers.
Do it on others, so, but that's the thing, if we're gonna be consistent, we have to be consistent.
No, you should inspect.
I just think it's a hard thing to.
But it's not like, uh, sitting there for an entire, uh, time of paving.
If it's consistent, it's consistent.
I just think it's gonna be hard if we're gonna start to look nickel and dime what VHB does, and say, alright, don't do this on this kind of a job, don't do do this on this kind of a job, and we're gonna base it all on problems and successes we've had, it's gonna be ridiculous. I mean, you, everybody's gonna come in and be, wait, you want me to inspect this, but not this?
Right.
You want, on, on jobs where it's sloped, I can walk away, but on levels, I gotta stay. On public roadways that we might accept, I have to be there the whole time, but parking lots that we don't really care about, uh, and they're level, I can leave. Sloped ones, I can, I mean, you know, it's gonna be one of these things, like, you're gonna be like, alright, we have this policy that took us six days to write, and now they don't know what the hell to do, you know?
And in the past, we have waived the construction inspection for some sites, and inevitably, we run into problems with not getting, uh, the final design the same, or the final work the same as the design, so.
Alright.